Okay.
I'll do it again, likewise handling this thing. I'll call the City of Bisbee Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order February 16th, 2023. I'll call roll call. Mike Ablyn?
Here.
John Bayless?
Here.
David Cott?
Here.
Douglas Dunn?
Here.
Sandy Huesman?
Here.
Doug Taylor?
Here.
Wonderful. Nina, before we go any further, could you draft a letter under... Letterhead for my signature to Michael Smitzer and Nancy Pirana for their service on this board?
Yes, sir.
Call to the public, this is on any item that's not on the agenda, there's no public here, so I'm assuming we can move on from that. Agenda one is election of a vice chair for planning the zoning commission.
Mr. Chair.
I'd like to nominate Sandy Huesman. She was always a great volunteer for city planning and I know she's done great work with the P and Z.
A second then.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sandy. I agree.
Thank you.
Agenda item two, review and direction of staff regarding the zoning code 6.14, recreational vehicle provision for occupancy of vehicles and trailers for residential purposes, authorization of temporary occupancy. We've gotten, again, this is the staff has been working on this, but they presented to us for review.
You got your choice, I guess, don't we? I think Nina had done a real, I didn't have anything to do with this, Nina had everything to do with it. She did an excellent job on it, okay?
I appreciate that, but I don't have any comments, it's whatever you want to review and tell me what you don't want, what you want to see.
Okay, again, this is for our discussion, this is not a public hearing, this is not a recommendation of council at this point. It's for our review and discussion and hopefully at the end of this meeting we'll have, give staff direction to move forward, to put this on an official agenda, a public hearing for adoption, however we want to go with this. Okay, open it up for comments, questions, suggestions.
I have a comment about the old Bisbee portion of it, I guess that's primarily what this is, is old Bisbee, is that my understanding?
No, this is for everywhere, the old Bisbee part-
Is just K?
Is just, is it K? Yeah, just K, but that came from the DRB. When the recreational vehicles went before them because the P and Z wanted a recommendation from them and that was their recommendation, what they wanted to see.
I guess with the old Bisbee, I wonder how we account for, because it sounds like they need to be behind some sort of barrier or in a garage space, how are we accounting for those that don't have that space because old Bisbee has a 4,000 square foot, is that correct? Lot area? And so they probably don't have room for a garage and those that live without any street access, is it, am I talking too much?
No.
And those that don't have any street, you know, any off-site parking, we, how do we take that into consideration, I think is an issue. I think that might be, for that little part of it, it might be the primary issue. I have other comments, but I'd like to yield back to the chair.
Other comments?
I have a question about item, I don't know if it's HC3 under generator? Specifically, you know, right now it's 30 degrees. What are you going to do when somebody's running their generator at nighttime to keep warm? If my understanding is correctly, that a generator is used in connection with the use of must limited to daylight hours.
If you look at your other one in 6.4, that was already in there. The only thing that we changed was the wording for limited, so 3 was there with everything. Somebody just asked for the wording to be changed a little bit. So 3 is already in our code.
Right, so my understanding, interpretation is that you are not allowed to have a generator used at nighttime?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, okay. And the next question I have is I just want to get clarity on this permit. Are we saying that somebody can park here, item number five, for any such occupancy of seat 72 hours? Is that, do we interpret that you can park your RV vehicle without any penalty or cause for basically three days, no problem? If it's past three days, then you have to go for a permit?
This is addressing occupancy.
Yeah, that's if they're occupying it, if they're living in it.
Okay, so forgive me then, where is it that, how do we define if they're living in it? Because what I'm trying to get is that the problem, the point of old Bisbee is you got an RV parked on the street. And are we okay with an RV being parked on the street? Okay, for two or three days at a time? I would say no, not, but is it okay to do so in this instance? Are we allowing RVs to be parked on a street?
No.
No, yeah, it says no overnight.
Yeah, no overnight parking.
Yeah, no street, no street.
Okay, so then if you've got, how does that impact the occupancy component and the generator component? You got an RV on the street that we're not allowed to have, we can't have the generator on overnight, so the premise is we don't want RVs on our public streets for any period of time at all. Is that what I'm understanding?
No, they can be on the street within, to unload and load their trailer.
Sure.
But they can't be left there.
But they can't be left, I think it's a 24-hour, yeah, 24-hour period is what we, for loading and unloading or general maintenance, is the only way it can be left on the street.
So then we can't, so basically to Chuck, to your point, we don't want RVs on our streets in old Bisbee or for that matter, any place?
It detracts from the start, doesn't it?
Correct. Okay, so just want to understand that in what circumstances and where can RV park?
According to this, nowhere.
Nowhere overnight, yeah.
From private-
On private property.
If it's behind some barrier.
In old Bisbee and then you didn't make that stipulation for other neighborhoods? About screening and?
I believe it's in C at the beginning or at the-
Okay, I see that, yeah.
Yeah.
So any of these Mercedes revils for these, you call, I don't figure what they call these?
Their vans or something.
These vans, basically what we're saying is, no, you can't park that on the street in old Bisbee.
So that's what my, one of my questions would be, what's the alternative? Because this is a tourism issue, that particular one.
It's a huge tour.
Tourists arrive in all kinds of different modes of transportation and one is that. And also we have, and Joe has had to deal with these folks, we have a lot of restaurant owners and tour guides and you name it, parking on viable tourist parking spots in vans and trucks and trucks with trailers and it, I don't know how we're going to differentiate.
And just to add to that, Chuck is-
But if you look at, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry, I don't want to let you hear speaking. On F, so properly licensed and registration vehicles and travel trailers only may be used for temporary occupancy, subject to the conditions and limitations stated below, which are the ones that are in black. So F is already in there, they just have to come to the city and get a special use, or a special permit, correct, Joe?
Yeah.
For them to be able to do that.
And the $200.
They're really not, they're really not supposed to be parking on our streets.
Right.
And we see way too much of that and especially in your neighborhood.
Which I think is not a problem, I will tell you where I stand, I think it's not a problem in that it feeds all the tourism, I mean if they, if pages could put a section for RVs in their lot, that'd be great, I don't think that's going to happen.
They don't own that lot anymore.
No, the, yeah, but the guy that, yeah, I call it pages, but yes, I know the guy that-
The ownership is the same as if they-
So my concern, most of my observations have been the people come down and they're, there's some people that come in these gigantic, okay? And those are few and far between, because they can't even navigate through the city, they're like, I gotta get the hell out of here, I'm going to go nuts. But the people that come in there, the Sprinter vans, most of those people don't stay in their van overnight.
Right.
They are traveling through, but they still need a place to park it. And so if we don't allow them to park in the street, I think this does allow that-
Just not overnight camping or occupancy.
Right.
So they can park it, so they can park an RV on our street.
Right, they just can't camp in it or, or live in it.
Can't stay overnight in it.
Right.
And we can't have the generator on, but they can park in there. Okay, I just want to get clarity on that.
On a short-term basis, they have the same rights as any other licensed vehicle.
So our concern is having a guy that really has got some type of god knows what on, you know, when he's staying there for three, four days, living there on the street.
Yeah, and I've seen that.
Well, mostly the people that are doing it, with all due respect, it's sort of an eyesore.
Yeah.
I mean, I-
But there isn't an alternative, which is, I know we have a special, is it a special permit, Doug, for some sort of camping on, dry camping? I know it's in there under, I think it's under the, under the, I don't remember where it is, I didn't. But we do have a, we do have something about a dry camp area that has to be like between, I think it's between three quarters of an acre and four acres. I think that Mark Appel brought it up years ago.
The alternate, the alternate-
Alternate part, campsite, yeah.
Yeah.
Which no one's ever used, but is that even something that somebody wants to do?
They can always go to the RV park across from the golf course.
That has a limited, oh, maybe, maybe that doesn't have a limit, that's a big one.
Well, it was packed when they were building the wall, but now that the wall's not being built, the place is, is almost empty.
And then we got a couple of Mount Eiffel Dopey Road.
Correct.
Yeah.
So there is, so there is options for these people to go. When they start to complain, oh my God, you're, you know, you're, what are you doing to me? No problem at all, just go to A, B, or C and there's a fee and these are the rules. But we don't want you sleeping on the street.
Well, a lot of those, if you don't mind me just speaking up, but a lot of those, the Mercedes campers and such, you can't tell if anybody's in there anyway because they don't run a generator usually at night, I think.
Even if they do, they won't even hear it, pop.
Yeah, probably not, yeah. The, if I may jump back in, the thing that I'm, I think it's, if this is what the citizens want, this is all well and good, but the thing I worry about, and Mr. Ward and I have had conversations about this, we had one the other night about it, is enforcement. And he is, I, as building inspector, he is overwhelmed, I think, I don't want, you know, but you have an overwhelming amount of work just taking care of infractions in building and, you know, issuing permits and all that. This seems like a police officer kind of thing, but I know they won't do it. They, and it just worries me that we have, until we have someone who can really enforce it, we have no, nobody who can, you know, we don't have it and we have enough rules. I thought that reading the rules of what we had was, you know, that we could add to that, but I don't think rewriting it, I think, to me. And I think that enforcement is a huge issue and I would like to see someone who, you know, this is my pipe dream, but I would like to see someone who can do P and Z enforcement, including DRB, and that gives Joe a break. And I don't, and I remember you were retiring, but I don't know if you still are, but the, I just think, you know, the next person is going to be really overwhelmed because at least you're in the swing of things and, and, you know, I just hate to see more rules and not enforced because it becomes-
The reason why we got this before, before you guys again, is because council, several of the city council who are here at a meeting had come and, and presented their, presented their side with the P and Z, but they get, they're getting a lot of complaints from, from residents and they want to be able to address those.
I do feel that, and I understand that Bakersville, Saginaw, San Jose, all, you know, there's, there's a lot of people apparently living in it, but we do have a, a code requirement that allows anything before 2006 to have grandfather status on, on being, you know, any kind of camper or, you know, motorhome that someone was living in at the time, that was sanctioned at the time, can continue to be 2006. But what I'm also concerned about is in Saginaw, Bakersville, San Jose, you know, it's, these, I don't know if the people have money to screen or, or lose the rent or build a garage. It's, I, it almost, that one, and I think you did a great job, Nina, I'm not crazy, but that one is almost-
I just did what the board and, I mean, the commission and the council wanted.
And I get what DRB's trying to do, although I do think they have to address all the commercial vehicles that are parked on the street also if they're going to do this, but I also feel like that's a gentrification thing that, that, you know, telling people in Bakersville, and I know now houses are very expensive in Bakersville, but they're everywhere, they're expensive. I think telling them that they have to do this is, is, I kind of feel like it's, if you move to the airport and then start complaining about the plane noise, it feels like that to me. And I just want to make sure that we, you know, sort of pick through every possible item. I do think Joe's got way more on his plate than he needs, we talked about that at DRB the other night. So I don't know, I do understand the motivation of it, but I don't know how we can do it. And I hate to see another, where the, you know, we have a lot of laws where people say, the police don't take care of that, and the police don't give tickets, you know, that's, that's been a, a big deal that everybody knows. And I hate to see that another item go on for that, so that's my-
And I'd like to address that item too, the C. I, I know of a lot of instances in old Bisbee where people are living at, at another elevation, at a B or C elevation, and their property for parking is down at street level, which they can't put a six-foot fence in front of.
Right. Right.
I, I can think of a couple places where that's, where that would come into play. And then others who just don't have the yards.
Right.
And they may be able to park on their private property, but they can't put up a six-foot fence because of that, so I really like to, I like to shelter a lot of these RVs and trailers, but I also don't want to really trample on people that have been homeowners here and-
But at the same time, you don't want to turn this into a, this is not a local problem, this is a problem on a national level in other towns, just so you know. So we shouldn't feel bad that we're ostracizing certain people, this is a, people are forced to live in fifth wheels now just because of the nature of home prices, but that shouldn't preclude us from trying to keep Bisbee what it traditionally is. And to your point, Joe, it's sort of a conundrum because on one hand, we want to welcome the people here, but at the same time, you don't want to take away from what the aesthetic value of it is. And you're starting to see downtown Tucson is a disaster. I mean, and there's mobile homes and RVs just parked all over, because Walmart recently said, no, you can't park your RV in Walmart anymore, we're not allowing it.
I think we're talking about two different things here.
Well, I know you're talking about the trailers on the houses and their limitation, because if you park on a house and the rule requires to put a perimeter fence and you can't put a perimeter fence, then what do you do? So I get it. So you have to, though, take responsibility for your recreational vehicle. And that may force people to either put it into storage or move it to another location. I mean, where, how do you have your cake and eat it too? That's, that's really the problem.
What about snowbirds that come here in the winter and they drive their camper van here? And that's their only vehicle for transportation, how do we, how does that fit into this?
No, there's, there's nothing, like we were saying, there's, there's nothing against you using it, using it as your transportation, it's a, it's a logically licensed vehicle, but as far as leaving it and camping on the street, those are, that's a different issue.
Well, not on the street, no, they park it in their driveway.
How many of those?
You're saying people that are, that are renting a house here?
That have houses here. I know people that have a houses here.
Okay, I see what you're saying, yeah.
But are they really using it, Sandy, as to actually then drive around town? And how, how big is that vehicle?
Camper vans.
Yeah, those, those are-
Sprinter vans.
Well, the pickup trucks with the, the, on the back, yeah. A little hustle in there.
But can I, can I do one thing off that subject? And B, recreational vehicle space, the definition, I couldn't find recreational vehicle space listed anywhere else in this, so I'm wondering if we could just cross that out.
Well, that's on the revised code, right, Arizona?
Yeah.
We'll have to then make those spaces if that's going to stay in.
Yeah, we can get, I'm just trying to look where it was, I see it now. So you just want to put that out?
And then does this, and I, I read through it all, but who knows, my brain sometimes is a- Does this preclude somebody with a, with a lot somewhere, let's say in, I don't know, Saginaw, from allowing people to park their, you know, to have off-street parking for, even though they're not going to live in it, they're, we're trying to get them off the street it seems, especially in old Bisbee, do we have any kind of ruling here against some, somebody using a large lot that could park them and then they pay that person a few bucks?
Well, there's something in here about-
I'll, I'll let Joe talk about that because I don't know.
There's, there's a section in here, I can't remember exactly where it is, but it talks about you can't charge.
Right.
Yeah, and C1-
It's in there someplace.
Yeah, C1 is already in the code, you're right.
It's like, my brother lives in Oro Valley and he brings his trailer home, his camp trailer, and he unloads it and then he takes, he takes it out to the storage unit.
Right, right.
Which we have, we have those.
Because he can't have it on his property.
That's because of the homeowner. I live in Oro Valley too and the HOAs will crush you, they're like, no, it's in your CC and ours.
I don't want Bisbee to be Oro Valley either, I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah, right.
But I think that we should, as far as people being able to park, I think that's different than people camping on their property. You're talking about a place to park, I think it'd be a really good motivation.
Yeah, I, I do think that a major point is this isn't, you know, I saw, I think with Peoria, Glendale, Tucson, maybe Oro Valley, it, we're not that. We have some bizarre, you know, Jerome is probably the closest thing to what we are. And it's, you know, I know where I live is way off, you know, we don't have any street. So I'm getting a helicopter, no. But, but you know what, it, does this, are there sort of gushy edges of this thing that work for people who live on a mountain and, you know, like we do with the post office? No other town I've ever lived in didn't allow any mail delivery at your home. Do we have something like that or, you know, I just don't see how a cookie cutter of Tucson can fit over Bisbee.
That's why we have you guys.
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
You guys represent the community and, and you guys are trying to do what's best for the community and that's commendable.
So Sally, what would be your recommendation for your instance, that somebody has an RV, they're not living in it, do you have an idea or a suggestion that if it's geographically impossible to construct a fence or some type of shape, what's the recommendation? That's an exemption? If, if they can establish that it's not possible to erect some type of a screen wall, then that's an exemption? I'm just spitballing with you guys here, because there could be some sort, there could be some situ- I'm just troubled that if you can, if you can get a vehicle up to a place to park it, I got to imagine you get the ability, the only exception that I can think of, I don't know if it's Opera Street or Clausen, there's some guy that has these four-wheel, and I'm telling you, he's got his four-wheel drive vehicle with the wheels, they're like an inch off the hill. You know who I'm talking about, and I'm like, good God, if it ever rained and that thing comes down, that car-
It's on Kenbee.
I'm sorry?
It's Kenbee, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm telling you, that's going to go down the side of the hill. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. And I think to Sandy's point, that's the type of things that we got to try to avoid. He can't build a fence there, it's not physically possible, so, but he still parks his car there.
We had, we had a, a problem, he's still up there, up on, on the big parking area, up on Quality Hill, that's kind of in the middle, kind of a plaza almost, everybody parks around it. We had a, we had a motorhome that sat up in front of one of the, the contributing structures for the historic district and it was, you know, 50-foot long motorhome or thereabouts, but I'm not, I didn't measure it, pretty big old motorhome and everybody complained about it all the time, but there was nothing that could be done, but it was in the-
I was one of the neighbors that seemed that they bought that property so that they could put their motorhome there. And, and they could, right? The city couldn't do anything about it?
The city couldn't do anything about it?
They were parked in front of their own property, although it was annoying to the rest of us.
Well, the, where they were parking was in public.
Yeah, oh, but it was in front of their property.
It was in front of their property, so they had to move, if you, if the police got out and then they could move it two inches every 24 hours or 48 hours or whatever the case is. But I, I used to feel a lot of complaints about that specific one and there's, there's other ones in town that sit in public parking places and you guys have seen them. And there's probably a good equitable way to, but you, don't jump it, don't make your minds up fast on anything, some of you want them all over, but there, there are issues that have been, that have come up and then we got, we've got the elected representatives who take a lot of, take a lot of flak on those things too. And it's going to be hard to find a real good solution that's going to fit everybody.
I think that's my point, somebody is going to get teed off. But it's a minority can't rule the majority.
Right.
And that's just an unfortunate consequence and so.
You know, I did a lot of looking at line two of zoning codes and parking RVs and, and that darned six-foot fence is in most of them.
It is.
Yeah.
No, it, it, I don't know what to tell you, if you can't put the six-foot fence up, then that's the rules that were passed and, sorry.
I would argue that maybe a six-foot fence is not always the most desirable solution in a lot of areas, rather maybe just see the RV than have a big fence around, around a property or partially around a property. But I'd kind of like to go back to if I made the old Bisbee and the visitor RVs and we, anyone who's spoken seems to be of the same consensus, we don't want to be heavy-handed with our visitors and impolite. And I don't know how RV people scope out a place when they're coming to, but maybe Heather at the visitor's center and her people might put some blurb or whatever on the websites that Bisbee is control, in control of, like Discover Bisbee, I think maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Or the actual city website, saying, hey, RVers, this is how we are, you know, in old Bisbee, parking is limited and blah, 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 and here are the options, we welcome you, but please be respectful of what we're trying to do here, something along those lines.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that is, and there are other sites like Hipcamp and some of those sites for RVs.
Tell them what your options are, right? Spell it out for them. I, I tried to survey what we offered as far as parking and really the only, the best place to park your RV is on Main Street.
Yeah.
You know, because you can't park in any of the lots, they're all parallel parking.
Right.
Unless you're parking in the Bisbee and you're, you know, you get there real early and you're taking up two and God forbid you try to get out any reasonable time. The only one I don't know about is the Mind Tour parking lot, I don't know if they can-
They, they park in there, but the manager doesn't like it.
Yeah, and they, they close off half of that parking lot at five.
They do like that.
Again, I, I don't recall the C- Again, I, I, I don't recall seeing any RV that's parked on our streets that's bigger than thirty-eight feet long. Very rare.
Not for the overnight yet.
Very rare. I mean, those people know, they're RVers, they know what are RV friendly roads and stuff, and, and they're pretty savvy to it. I think to your point about Old Bisbee is that we're not gonna have an RV parking on a street with, with people have, living in it. I think that's pretty clear. And we know that the RVs that are parking on the street are only small ones.
As a business owner on Main Street who really values my, um, my street visibility, it's, uh, an RV is not that much more annoying than a high-profile pickup truck.
That's correct.
You know, and there are plenty of those and there's not, apparently we're never gonna be able to do that.
I'd say ninety-nine percent of those people are not sleeping in that RV.
Any, anytime in the three years and two months that I've, that I've dealt with this situation. When I've approached someone who's been parked in front of my building for, and extended a period of time and said, hey, you know, you plan on a new movement? Whether it's a, a visitor in an RV or a school bus, you know, that they converted, or the guy across the street who has one of the new tourist vehicles. And I had to say, hey, you know, can, can, and they all do, and I don't think I'm generating any ill will by asking. So it's, it's kind of a non-problem. What kind of would be a problem if we had signs going up and down Main Street and said, no RV parking? Cause we don't have any...
Well, that would be detrimental to the tourist business, I have it right now.
For no good reason, as far as I'm concerned.
This allows RV parking on the street as long as it's not overnight.
Correct.
So that allows day trippers to come in, park, shop.
Do what they have to do.
And leave. So I don't think that really is an issue.
Yeah, we could stipulate, your RV, if it's gonna be on a public street, can't exceed a certain length. Like, somebody mentioned a school bus up by Castle Rock, somebody had a converted yellow school bus that was forty feet long. He was sitting there, and I've seen him go back and forth I-ten, back and forth to Tucson. He was down by Castle Rock for about a week, parked there. So that's what we don't want. And he's not gonna be able to park his vehicle in Old Bisbee on the streets. It's just almost physically impossible for him to, to move it.
Don't need rules about it, if it's gonna be prohibited unless you get there at six in the morning, you know?
Right. And they usually, they seem, those buses seem to park at the device up at the top of the hill in the, you know? They do, up there. I see a couple of them every year. But we're back to the thing that Sally said about on your property with the screen wall. It doesn't have to be a fence, there's various types of screen walls. They can be natural fences, et cetera, et cetera, but I just think, I sure as heck wouldn't wanna be living like, I have a house on Curve Street and there's public parking right along there. I sure as heck don't want a guy in a thirty-five-foot school bus parking in front of me and Nancy's house.
Almost all of the complaints that are, that are generated regarding that, the RVs of any sort, are, is, is about residents' RVs, not usually visitors.
Right, and so I think we, most of, of the people who live here who have a complaint could self-monitor this themselves. And, but who do they report it to? Report it to you, and then how is it remediated? I think that's one problem right off the gate. If there's no enforcement...
Yeah, well, nine has done a really yeoman's job in gathering this information. And if you steal ideas from these other places like Florence and Marana and all these? They have maps that stipulate where they can park. They have signs that they put up saying, you know, what, what's, what's prohibited and what's, what's allowed, uh, so...
We have, we have Higgins Parking Lot, or Higgins Park, whatever they wanna call it. I wonder if they could park there without, you know, like if we made that a designated spot, not like a tent city or anything, but just a spot where these can be parked? You know, most, I, I agree with you, Mike, that the, the, uh, the big ones, they know the rules. They go up to the, the, the camp next to the, uh, to the mine, or they go out somewhere else, or, you know, I don't see them, you know, cooking meals on the street or anything. I've seen that, um, you know, some people who, I mean, some people are living in cars and doing that, or some kind of small vehicle. It's not, I don't disagree with it, I mean, that's where their economic level is, and I think they all spend money here, so they should be happy they're here.
There was one other option that I didn't know might be available to them, and that would be to do Catholic church parking. Do they take RVs?
I don't know.
Just don't want the Catholic church to turn to a refuge, and next thing you know, you got a dozen mobile homes or RVers camping out under the auspice of the church.
Well, that's private parking, they're making...
I know, you're right, it is private parking, but the next thing you know, the church is like, we feel sorry for these people, we're only charging you a dollar a day, and now you've got this little... You got this... Exactly right, I mean, it's, as I said in the beginning, it's not a problem isolated just to Bisbee. This is a problem on a national level. And I was hopeful that the geography of Old Bisbee would lend itself to just making it difficult by default. We wouldn't have to write anything into this.
Yeah. So Joe, you said most of the complaints you get are about residents. So this two-hundred-dollar fee, would we charge that to our folks that live here? They're already taxpayers, you know?
If that's what you guys choose to adopt.
Yeah, it just would be up to the, the commission.
Currently, we don't, we don't...
It seems like a lot to me, I don't know. I, we wanna keep the riffraff out, okay? We wanna keep the, the, uh, the, uh, the clamits from moving in, but, uh...
You can change the amount, that was just the lowest amount of the cities that charged. That's the lowest amount that any of the cities that I found that did permits for that, that was the lowest amount. But that amount can be changed, but like Joe said, right now, we don't charge for that permit because we don't have anything in the code saying that we can.
But Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, if you have a house, you park your RV on it and it's plugged in and somebody's living in that RV? Isn't that by default a zoning violation?
Yep.
Yes, it is, and they, they need to pay for juice sewer and garbage.
That's correct. So we do have it in there, it really comes down to this, just how do we enforce it? So at least if people know, hey, we're letting everyone know that you are in violation, maybe we start out with just self-monitoring this. At least they know they've, they've got something to grasp onto. The real question is how is it enforceable?
I, I pass out a few notices every year that, um, you know, to people, I'd have people living in their yard. And, you know, you're, you can have up to thirty days, which is pretty generous for, from the city. If you can have thirty days of, of anyone at anybody's residential property to have, you know, your, your relatives from Alabama come visit you or whatever the case is.
Cousin Eddie.
What's that?
Cousin Eddie.
Cousin Eddie.
That's what we don't want, we don't wanna Cousin Eddie.
It's pretty generous, but, but then you get people who want, who go far beyond that. And, um, I've never had to do more than give them a notice in nine years now. And give them a notice and, and, you know, I always, I don't like to send people notices. I like to hand them notices and be able to talk with them and say, well, you know, there's a problem, we need to take care of this, and, and everybody's better that way.
I thought when we had this discussion before, I think it was you, Sandy, who was dealing with some people in Bakerville, was it? Who was having a problem?
No, that was, uh, one of our city council members.
Yeah, that was Joni Giacaminho, who was having an issue with it in Bakerville.
And she's got a lot of them that she's noticed in Warren too.
People living in RVs.
Uh-huh.
She, she can't, she gives us, you know, notices on...
But does people get notices from you and the, and the problem is solved?
Most of the, the ones that, that people are complaining about, nobody's living in. And we don't have anything to deal with that.
Okay, so that's a difference.
And there's some of them that blowing the garbage dump.
But, and this'll say that they can't park on the street overnight, whether there's a fee or not? And also if they're gonna be parking on private property, it's behind a six-foot fence or a barrier of some sort, right? That's what, that's what we're asking the city council to do.
Can I clarify that? Cause I'm kind of confused when it comes to G and H. Um, G allows someone from out of town coming to visit you in their RV and...
Oh, so G and H were already in the code?
Right.
Okay, 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 so I was just making sure we're in the same place. No, I was making sure we're in the same place, okay, I got you now, we're here.
So they can come and visit, they're in their RV, and they can stay in their RV on your private property for up to thirty days?
Correct.
Okay, now, do they have to be behind the six-foot fence?
Not right now.
Uh-uh.
Well, if, if this is, if this goes into effect, do visitors who come to stay with you for five days have to be behind a six-foot fence?
I think the way it's written, yeah, but that's why we're talking about it.
Okay, okay, that's, I'm just trying to...
It seems that there isn't a requirement for the separate sewer and all of that. I mean, if they're using a dump station...
If they're up to thirty days, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah, that's what it looks like, yeah.
And it said that, uh, on a temporary basis, they either need self-contained sanitation facilities or access.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, so it's in there.
Yeah.
Um, so right now, if somebody comes and visits me and they're in their RV and they're on my private property, they can stay for up to thirty days and it's okay.
Mm-hmm.
They don't have to be sheltered.
Provided that you tell me about it and I can send you a little piece of paper that says, go for it.
So they have to, even if you have visitors here for like five days, they have to get a permit to be on your property?
My Aunt Marilyn came to visit my parents next door and I made her get a permit.
Really?
Must be so.
Okay.
He's out of the world.
That was, that was one of the things that really confused me because under the H now, the new H, um, it all makes sense. But then when you got down to number five, I thought, you know, why would I have my, my, would my brother need a permit to come and visit me for a few days? I mean, I, that...
Well, I think that's what we're deciding, whether we wanna have a fee or not, and that would be a permit. Maybe we could have them register so the city's aware without having a fee.
How many people are actually gonna do that?
Most of them do it anyway.
Even with visitors coming for short term?
How many people do it? Not for a minute. I'm saying, they do it, they do it without permission.
Oh, do it anyway.
Yeah.
Ah, yeah, yeah. And if you had a thirty-day limit, what's to keep them from doing the same thing the guy on Quality Hill did? Register for thirty days or whatever, we're asking them to do for thirty days? Drive away for a day or two and then come back and use it?
And it just has three hundred and sixty-five.
Yeah, it does say in here, limit it for a year.
Okay.
And what, what is, sorry, I'm almost done. Um, under I, uh, temporary occupancy, I, I understand the whole contractor thing. Oh, no, I think, I think you already answered it. So H has to do with visitors and I has to do with contractors.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got it.
And most, most municipalities have some allowance for living in a temporary structure while you're building.
Yeah.
Let me bring up a little slightly different angle on it. Being a resident of Warren, Warren is full of property owners who own an RV and have no place to put it. Uh, there is, I guess, one example that I would direct you all to go look at in terms of someone who has taken action. Where are my notes here? And that is on Van Dyke, that someone had a, obviously a, an adjoining lot and redesigned that lot. I'm sure with your, uh, you know, approval...
We had, I think about that a couple of weeks ago and I was knocking on their door about eight o'clock in the morning.
But anyway, they really improved that lot in terms of getting it off the street, a very narrow street and parked. Uh, and, and they, they, you know, obviously brought in gravel and so forth in terms of making this a...
It looks pretty nice.
Right.
But that's not, that's not one-eleven Van Dyke, is it? With that huge carport?
I think, I think it's on Claussen.
Is it Claussen or Van Dyke? I'm not quite sure.
It's Claussen.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sure we're probably talking about the same one.
But, uh, that's about the only one that I've seen. And there are, if you drive around Warren, walk around Warren, there's literally, I mean, if we were to implement this, I mean, I've asked you this before, are you really ready to implement this?
Yeah.
Because they're everywhere. Uh, people who are parking their RV, and again, this is not because they're, they got financial problems, it's the contrary. I mean, they've got a nice home, but their nice home does not accommodate parking their large-size RV. And there's been, you know, one up the street from me that's been there for so long.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it's multiple vehicles, not just one.
In the past, though, it's, it's been just a matter of giving them, giving them, not even that, the, the legal notice usually, it's just a friendly notice that I do and the friendly letter and tell them that it's going, that's going to be a problem, and it usually corrects itself. Well, I'm, without getting, without getting too serious, hopefully people remain like that. You know, people have changed in the last couple of years with the code.
Well, I'm, I'm just acknowledging a reality, I'm not speaking for or against it, I'm acknowledging a reality. And that, uh, you made a comment to me, Doug, where you, you did a enforcement, and he says, okay, I'll do this, but you gotta make everybody else violate this.
And you made me go around about fifteen hours.
Uh, and, and that's what we're gonna have here. I mean, certainly the option is, you know, that I think that, you know, that the, uh, the storage units, I see that there's RVs parked out there and that's sort of an option. And a person can move from their property and rent a space or however that's done, and we encourage people to do that. But the situation is a little bit different in Warren than what we were talking about here in terms of Old Bisbee. And, um, I guess as if I was a city council person, be ready, if there's people now complaining about RVs, I want you to hear about all the RV owners complaining to you about, what am I gonna do with this? Again, I'm not speaking for or against it, I'm just saying that there's a unique situation, at least in, in Warren, uh, where there's lots of those. And as you made the statement, some of those are not, you know, been there for so long, they're not inhabitable, you know? And some of those are, uh, in a backyard, so I mean, that's, that's okay, I guess, but, uh, they certainly have, you know, they're a junk car, you know? We still have enforced...
Remember that one up on the eight-hundred block of Compton? That stepped clear out of the, from the yard into the, into the right-of-way and was there for probably twenty years? It just got moved in the last couple.
So, uh, so anyway, I, I don't know, uh...
So you've got RVers that are coming into town. We want those people, it helps for commerce. We don't want the big ones parking on the streets. At the same time, we don't want the natives who have RVs to be putting these big RVs on their property. Those, that's what I see, the, the three components. And so I don't think Bisbee wants to be stigmatized as we're anti-RV for the people that are coming to visit. Okay? And I think there's some amicable means to solve that problem because those that are parking RVs, if they're big enough, they usually sometimes even have a car or electric bike. They can park wherever there's designated RV parking, just for clarity. The smaller RVs, they can park it on the street, they just can't live in it. That makes sense, and those pretty much are people that are spending money. The other group that we need to address are those people that have bought a piece of land or a house with the intention of driving their RV down here and plop it in on their driveway. And if they can afford to buy a house or live here, if we can provide an alternate, alternate cost-effective means for them to put their RV someplace else, that would be a win-win. I think allowing people to park their RVs here, it's an, it's an I sort of, if they can't put the six-foot fence or the shade structure, then there's several other options for you to put your RV. The RV isn't gonna get damaged on the storage place any more than it's gonna get damaged on your front yard. Pack rats are not gonna be preferable to your yard versus the storage yard. So that's not a valid argument.
It's still gonna look better if they park their RVs like in the Warren situation. If they're parking their RVs on their own property as opposed to bringing them out on the street, which we've got a lot of on the...
Not on the street, we, we don't want an RV on the street. I mean, that's unilateral, whether it's Warren or Old Bisbee, you don't want it on the street.
Overnight.
Overnight, okay? We certainly don't want a big thirty-five-foot, forty-foot RV parked on the street. That's just, an Old Bisbee, just by its geography, that's not gonna, there's, there's only a couple of areas where they can even do that. And Warren, they do have the ability to park on the street, but we are proposing, we're not allowing them to park your RV on the street. And the third issue is, if you wanna park your RV and you're gonna keep it on your property? Yeah, for the visitors, for Uncle Eddie, or, and if so, for how long? Okay?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, okay? And that's thirty days with total, it's not twenty-five and you move off for a day and then you get another twenty-five. It's thirty days within a calendar year.
What if the, uh, the overnight parker in this, um...
What if the, the overnight parker in this, I don't think he has any idea on it, but the overnight parking, they're staying at one of the hotels, and they need to park their vehicle somewhere, how does, how does that work?
Well, the paid parking lot.
Right.
Well, the paid parking lot says no campers. I know they have them, but they say, there's a sign that says no campers.
They gotta go, where's, where's the next logical place for a forty-foot RV, Class C RV?
Or even the vans. You know, the vans are, are part of that.
Vans can park on the street.
No, it says park a recreational vehicle or trailer overnight on any public street.
So, is the Sprinter van gonna be considered a recreational vehicle, and we're seeing that they can't park on the street?
According to this definition.
So, that's a problem.
Yeah.
That, that's a huge problem, because I can tell you that the bike shop is now running tours for mountain bike rides, and more and more people are coming through here, and if those folks coming through here wanna pull over for the night to check into a funky, cool Airbnb, or whatever it is, they're gonna get ticked off, and that's gonna be anti-RV.
I agree.
That's not a good thing to have. That I can tell you right now.
That's probably something you wouldn't want to fly, then, right?
Yes, just I'm glad we're having, because I, light bulb didn't go on. We don't want that.
You said the solution, the, the problem solves itself, they're just not adequate parking for them. It's not a, it's an unreasonable expectation to come to Old Bisbee with a vehicle of a certain size, and think that you're gonna be able to find on-street parking, or that we're able to provide it, we just limited our available spaces.
Regardless of the size.
That's not being anti-RV.
Right, but regardless of the size, we're saying that you can't park your RV on the street. So, those Sprinters are typically twenty-eight feet in length or shorter, and what this is saying is that we are not going to allow those people to park their Sprinter vans on the street.
Is there a twenty-four hour, or what if?
There is a twenty-four hour system, seems, under the guise of loading, and if we just leave that in, then they can park their Sprinter overnight, and they're good to go. And we take out the twenty-four hour unless we need that for other parts of the community.
Yeah, that's...
Well, Doug's idea is kind of proactive, have a designated, say Higgins Hill or something?
Yeah.
Have, have a place that gives these people an outlet, you know, you don't have to go to the, the RV park where you're gonna pay, you know, twenty bucks a night or whatever, you know, if we have a, an outlet, if we have a safety valve of Higgins, and we have maps, and we have signs, then people know.
Yeah, 'cause the reason why those folks buy those Sprinters, is because most of them fit in a parking spot.
Yeah.
That's why they buy. Okay, so I, I think we need to take a good, hard look at the length limitation, that we don't shoot ourselves in the foot with this.
I did find an exclusion listed in somebody's zoning code that said van campers and truck campers are excluded from the recreational vehicle definition, because they may be used as non-travel recreation, such as commuting to work and school.
That might be something good to put in there. What's that again?
It just excluded camper vans and truck campers.
'Cause the pickup is not, it has a camper thing on the back, but it's not any bigger than a regular-sized pickup.
Yeah, which is pretty big. A big pickup's pretty big.
So, I, I think if we put a length limitation, that's not gonna shoot us in the foot, okay? And most, I don't, I don't know of any of these folks that are gonna drive into Old Bisbee or Warren to sleep in their camper van, okay? They usually, they use their camper vans for sleep, because they wanna drive out outside of the city environment and observe the stars and nature, and whatever it is, they come into the...
Boondocks, what they call boondocks.
They come into the city because they wanna explore a couple of days in Bisbee and park their RV for a couple of days.
Yeah.
So, you're proposing that camper vans can park overnight on the street?
Yes, they can't...
Unoccupied?
Sticky, unoccupied, yes. You can't sleep in your RV on a public street in Bisbee, okay? And I think what you can find is that by default, you're not gonna get a forty-footer, or even anything longer than a thirty footer that can even park on the street. So, if we put a limitation to it, you're not gonna shoot yourself in the foot, because anyone that's driving a forty footer, they want, they're not gonna wanna sleep in their forty footer if they don't have electric hookup, and they don't have black water hookup.
And it's on an incline.
And it's on an incline. So, by default, the geography is not gonna shoot us in the foot. They know this, okay? So, I, I think that is worth trying to massage that, to get it down, and what's a reasonable parking spot? I mean, you can't fit in a parking spot anyway, you're not supposed to take up two parking spots. Taking up two parking spots, that by default, would exclude you from this situation.
Right.
'Cause anything more than two parking spots is hurting Bisbee, because that is two parking spots.
Does it say that anyplace in here?
I'm sorry?
Does it say that anyplace in here?
I don't believe so.
So, maybe that's...
I'm just split-balling to try to clarify this, okay? And then, if you got a bigger one, we're just focusing on the people that are coming in, not the people that are living off whatever, but just addressing the, the people that are pass-through, okay? Then you got the issue of the people over in Warren in the outskirts, where they can easily put a forty footer, okay? And they're, they're, to your phrase, it's Uncle Eddie, and he's parked out on, on the street for the next thirty days, okay? You don't want him on the street either. You don't want a thirty footer or a forty footer on our streets. So, they would take their thirty or forty footer, and they'd go to a hookup place, which they're gonna wanna do anyway, because most of those people, if they're living on it, they wanna have electric. And I see all the time, they parked in the street, and they got the giant two-twenty yellow core fifty feet long, plugged into somebody's, you know, one-ten outlet, for Christ's sake, whatever it is. And that unto itself is a problem, Joe. It's a tripping hazard, it's a fire hazard, there's multiple, and then they pull their gray water plug, and they just drain it with the hose someplace, and no bueno.
And hopefully, it's just great.
Yes. And then, the third element is, if you wanna park on your property, you can only park there for thirty days. So, no parking of a forty-foot vehicle, again, I'm just parameters. You can't park a forty-foot vehicle unless it's in a designated RV parking spot. We don't allow it on the street.
Well, this has the, they can, if they screen it or put it in a garage, they can...
That's a whole nother issue. I'm just trying to break, I'm just trying to compartmentalize this.
Yeah.
To come up with some type of matrix that, if this, then that.
Yeah.
And then you go into Sandy's concern, is they, well, if they park it on their yard, and they're not living in it, okay, but it's theirs, then by default, they would have to have some type of shade covering, or six-foot screen, and then you got the issue that what happens if you can't put the screen?
If Uncle Eddie comes to visit, what, what about having something in there to say that for those thirty days, you don't have to be behind, you don't have to have your, your, your RV screen?
That's an option.
As a, as, you know, maybe a reasonable accommodation, but that's...
For visitors, yeah.
If you're a visitor, and you're only gonna stay for thirty days, and you're not living in this thing, for Christ's sake, then we'll give you an exemption to the screening. If, however, you're gonna buy your RV, and you're gonna, your intention is to park it there, then at a bare minimum, you've gotta put up some screening. And you can't move it off for thirty days, and then come back for thirty days, and then go back and forth.
I have a suggestion, I don't even know if it'll work, but I was just listening about how the different ones, what if, instead of it all just being encompassed in one, we outline, give the definitions like I have at the, at the top, and then we outline visitors, residents, historic district, instead of lumping them all in together. That way, there are certain restrictions, or allowances, or whatever, for, here's what the visitor can do, and what they can't do.
Yeah, that's great.
Here's what the residents can do, if, if A, then B, if no structure can be made, then A, then B, and then here's the historic district.
I mean, you can literally do it like figures. Twenty-four feet or less, here's the permitted uses. Over twenty-four feet, you can do this.
Makes it a little bit more clarifying for visitors, 'cause we don't want to discourage them, and it'd be easier for the residents to figure out what they need to, what they're allowed to do, without having to worry about the visitors.
The RVers, I have friends that are RVers, but they Google these types of things, 'cause they wanna know, are there hookups? Are there facilities? You know, so if Bisbee had something on their website that says, we welcome RVers, here are the rules and regulations, it's not like it's this hidden kind of thing. RVs less than twenty-five feet, we welcome you to park on the street, just please understand, there's no hookups, there's no generators, there's no overnight camping. Greater than twenty-four feet, you're not allowed to park your vehicle on the street, but here are some locations where you can do it. For our local residents, no RV parking on the street that's over this length, okay? And if you have an RV and you wanna park it on your property, it has to have this.
When, when court enforcement shows us to talk to these people, it helps to have everything, black and white, no brary areas, and easy to understand.
Here's your little placard that says, here are the rules.
Because everybody, all human beings, we all have that in us, and that's where people come from a lot of times, and it, it, it would be helpful to have to clarify.
You, you could have a one-page, or your kid, if he's not this height, he can't get on the roller coaster, I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah.
Just keep it, I hate to use the expression, CJ, CJ run, but everyone sees in one page that what's fair for these visitors is also fair for the residents, and there's non-biased.
Yeah. Well, state parks allow, most state parks in Arizona, they only allow twenty-four foot and less, and they don't allow generators at night.
And they have designated park, I mean, if you go into an, to a state park, any state park, designated parking for this size vehicle, you go into a truck stop.
Right.
They have designated, you know, here's, you can't go into the, the regular pump if you've got a forty-eight-foot-long tractor trailer. So, I think that doesn't, we're not saying anything that's anything unusual. So, Sandy, are you good with that?
So, do we sort of...
Conceptually, I'm just...
I'm sorry, what?
Do we sort of drop back and rethink this, is that...
Oh, no, that, all of this is just for review. I'm just taking notes. I can, your direction to, is to me, and to Joe, or whoever, staff-wise.
I'd like to make a motion.
We don't make motion on this, it's just review, and give direction to staff, so...
So, I would direct Chuck to come up with this matrix. Not just Chuck, Chuck. I, I think we can collectively, if you want, I'll, I'll put some rough ideas together with some, a one-pager that shows the size of the vehicles, and some rules and regulations, and I can try to disperse it to everyone.
Well, actually, don't...
No, you have to go through...
You have to go through me, 'cause if you disperse it to everyone, that's a violation of open meeting law.
Okay, so I could, I would volunteer to put a very simple thing together, that, and it's open to discussion, and it'd be great, twenty-five foot, thirty foot, forty foot, at least set that up, and then we could write in some items, rules, if you would, or permitted uses.
Is, is, is a, the Sprinter vans, that's a Class B, right? What else is Class B?
I think only the, the small unit campers.
Only the vans?
The, I think, maybe the pickup, the pickup camper might be Class B also.
'Cause that may be an easy way to...
That is, and I'm sure I could Google, there's gonna be a picture, if you Google class sizes of vehicles, here's the A, here's, and here's the definition of what that is. So, if you're not sure what your vehicle is, a Class A allows for these vehicles. They do the same thing on the highways with, with weights for trucks. Your, your GVW is, is one of the determinators for that, so it's, it's not gonna be where, like, we're reinventing the wheel.
No.
That's what I like about, is that, look, the federal government mandates it, this mandates it, so we're just following the rules within what's already established and bringing it to people's attention. That way, it doesn't put us on the hot seat.
And also differentiate between visitors and residents?
Mm-hmm, and then the historic district.
Yeah. I know, when you were headed on Sunday.
Yeah, I think if, with the one sheet, well, if you, visitors, residents, and historic district, because the historic district has, is its own animal in itself, even though it is still residents, it's still...
And anyone that's coming into a historic neighborhood will appreciate, because they're coming to the town, I mean, you go to Tombstone, they got stuff, I mean, Tombstone's a good example, what's Tombstone doing? They got RVs all over the place.
I could find that they had any regulations, period.
And it looks horrible.
But not on Allen Street, right?
They don't allow it on Allen Street, but other than that, I could not find where they have any rules regarding it.
I mean, that one man's street, where they have that little mini RV park, these RV parks have not become transitory, they're like, people are living there, and it looks like crap. That's my fear for Bisbee, that, like you said, although it'd be great for the church, the church parking lot now becomes this little hovel for these people to congregate.
They can put a timeframe on it.
I think there is. It's, isn't it Monday through Saturday, I think, or Monday through Friday? And they do have a thirty-day, or thirty-dollar overnight parking fee. So, you can park, I don't know if you can live in it, but you can't park something there overnight. And where's the Higgins Hill parking?
On the other side of the pickleball court, on the far side, up by it, you can see it from the highway.
Between Egg and Till and the pool.
Yeah. It's so hard for them to get to.
It is hard. You gotta kind of know where it's at to go there.
If you put about twelve, there's the problem, and it's like a runaway.
Yeah, it is.
I don't know if I'd suggest that one.
So that, so I'm understanding, you're gonna put that together, does staff need to do anything?
I, I like where you were headed with it, if you wanna incorporate his and yours.
Well, I'll, you do your thing, and then I'll put it in there with the visitors.
I'm just gonna go onto the internet and generate some ideas to present it to you, and then...
Okay.
Everyone's welcome, if they wanna do some research or anything else, and make up their own little rules, what they think, and then we would have a discussion.
Yeah, and we'll come back again with the same thing, review and duration of staff.
It's a guide, is what I'm looking at. I think it would be very helpful. Are you good with that? David, are you, are you comfortable with that, David?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I just wanted, you know, Chuck, Sandy?
Doug?
Yeah, I was, Jimmy, to me, we have two issues. One is Old Bisbee, which I, we all agree on in terms of what you're talking about here. The other is the rest of Bisbee, people who, property owners who own an RV, and, and, and they're, you know, do we wanna take them on? And I guess that's, you know, something that you need to be real clear on, and I guess one thing I wanted to add on to here is that the unique in, in Warren, and that is, many people, when you say can't park on the street, often, there's, there's, there's a public right-of-way between the street and your property line. And so, there are people who are assuming that, 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 that area is theirs.
It's amusement, it's our public right-of-way, and it's not.
But, I mean, but it is common misconception, and so people, you know, in essence, they're off the street, and so I, you know, when I made my comments, you wanna say, street and public...
Of course, public right-of-way, amusement.
But anyway, there are people who are gonna be, you know, who are assuming that they're on their private property when they are not.
I would like to leave, at this time, I'd like to just make it historic, because I think that's a can of worms, that Johnny doesn't even wanna open up that.
Well, yeah, you mentioned that earlier, or you brought up the question earlier, that you'd said to Joe and the, and the city manager, are you ready for this? Do you want more teeth? And you didn't say what the answer is, I don't know.
Well, Joe said, he, he's a good public servant, he says, if that's what you want, I'll do it, but, I mean, I, but I, I asked him that privately.
And he's, he's comfortable with things as they are.
Well, he said...
He may not be, but he has enough on his plate.
Yeah.
Considering the options, I guess.
You know, a lot of these HOAs that are outside of Bisbee, you know, there's rules, but rarely are they enforced until you get a group of neighbors that say, okay, let's get together and say, look, let's go knock on Mr. and Mrs. Smith's door and say, look, here are the rules. You can't have your kids living in this house, for the, you know, living in this RV, so I think it will be self-governing up to a point. That we don't have to burden, if, if there's a set of rules that have been established, how we enforce them will be determined at the time it needs to be enforced. The hope is that enough neighbors or people are aware of the rules, they're fair and balanced, and that it becomes a self-governing thing. And if it doesn't, then obviously, it's gonna get escalated to another level, and it will be an isolated incident where, hey, Joe, look, here are the rules, please take the placard over to... Please take the placard over to Mr. and Mrs. Smith's house, properly inform them, and if they wanna bitch and complain, it's gonna get taken to another level." Don't shoot the messenger kinda thing.
Well, and I think, you know, city council came to us, or at least Joni came to us, and asked us to look into this, and her, I think, I heard her right, her main concern was people living in RVs. And we know that that's already in the city code. So we already have that in here, and Joe, you've taken it to people and-
There you go.
Yeah. So we know, that was, that was the main thing that she brought to us. So the two things, I think, that we're, we're wanting to really address is the parking on public streets and visitors and guests, right?
She was also, she was also really, though, though, she'd just come to us with about eight or nine locations that were, um, and part of, a big part of it was, was these old, these old motorhomes that belong in the scrapyard.
Oh, okay.
And they're being, they're being left on these properties, sometimes not even on properties that they own, and they're, they're going to rack and ruin, and nobody's taking, nobody's moving them away.
Okay.
Well, Joe, here's one other thing before we just beat this to death. The vehicle's gotta be registered and insured. So are these old pieces of junk that are on people's properties, don't they by law have to be registered and insured?
They probably do.
You're allowed one and opable vehicle on every property in the city of Bisbee.
Fine, and that could not be screened by a six foot area. I mean, that's just-
And anything, anything you guys pass isn't gonna cover the zones that are existing. That's gonna be, because they'll be grandfathered in, the zoning code's everything, everything's grandfathered. But at least it will eventually cover everybody over a period, a long period of time.
Well, certainly back to Warren, again, there are some narrow streets in Warren, in contrast to one that you described, you were, you have lots of public right of way in front of your house. There are some narrow streets, and, and I can see walking around, there are individuals similar to what in Old Bisbee, and that is, once they park their RV, you're very restricted available parking in your neighborhood. And so if anything, it's probably more of an issue in some, those types of streets in Warren than they are even in Old Bisbee. Again, this, this, you know, Van Dyke, the example, and that's a very narrow street, and whether it's Van Dyke or whether it's another street, but anyway, the fact that that guy got his, his RV off the street and did a very good job, in my opinion at least, of, of preparing this, this land and to park that on. But prior, I mean, he was taking two spaces, two car spaces on a very narrow street, uh, of which there are quite a number of residents, and so-
And it looks so much better.
But how we encourage people, I mean, that was an expense to that person, and most people don't wanna spend any money, so.
Most people don't wanna pay taxes, and they complain, well, you know, that's just, that's, that's the conundrum that we have. So somebody's gonna get pissed off.
We have to make sure we include the no-street parking in, other than Old Bisbee.
I'll put that together and get it to you.
Um, just so you know, I probably have about thirty-five minutes left of video, and I did not bring an extra cartridge than I should have. So I apologize, I hate to- Uh, no, I want us to take our time, if we need to table the next item and we still need to do the RV, I just wanted to let you know that I might be running out of, out of stuff.
Well, I mean, are we, is that what we wanna do, table it and, uh?
Well, he's just gonna do that, and we'll bring it back for another review and direction.
Okay, then let's move on to the, you're gonna do a little word changes for the category.
Yep.
Uh, then item two, or item three, view and direct to staff regarding adding maximum parcel percentages for lot coverage in Article Five specific plan of zoning. And you haven't, have get, not, not given us the draft on that, right?
Yes, the draft is, um-
'Cause I, I read all the examples.
Yeah, it was right after, uh, it says, it says amended zoning code to include maximum parcel coverage. It was a, a yellow sheet of paper. And then-
Okay, well, that's, okay.
Joe, is this referencing lot density? Is this, is this basically lot density requirements?
Yeah. Most, most municipalities have a, have a percentage of how much-
Yes.
We don't, and Mr. Exitaro, he was in, you know, city, city of Bisbee's, um, district of other boards. He, he just couldn't believe that we didn't have it, and it probably is important to get it in the sense of, um, the amount, like, when you get up in Old Bisbee, especially in different places, the amount of runoff that we can, we can, um, do damage.
Yes, that's huge.
It's been vastly increased by the coverage.
Yeah, that's a huge problem, huge. Does everyone understand that concept?
This, this is pretty straightforward.
So are we ready to move this forward?
Um, if you don't have any, um, comments to add or anything, I can bring it back at the next meeting for a public hearing. And then we can, uh, recommend it to mayor and council.
Is that the wishes of everyone?
I just have a quick, are, are we looking in summation, are we looking to increase the minimum lot coverage?
We don't have anything that defines it.
Okay, so-
So what I, what I did is, you'll see all the ones that I pulled in the back, and I just kinda, I went to Joe and I'm like, "I think we just can do the average." But the one that we really liked was Marana, and how they broke it out, because they're still newly developing and, and all of that.
They have a lot of land there, too.
Right, but there's, but some of them have, um, they matched up with our minimum lot areas and the, uh, maximum building heights and things like that. And so that's why I took them from several different places.
So did you look at current, uh, statistics on lot coverage? I know that's really hard, but is there, like, in Old Bisbee, I'm sure that lot coverage is over forty percent.
Almost better, but-
Yeah. Well, I, um, you know, if you think this is what works, I-
Yeah, and, but we can review it again next time, too. I mean, if you want more information from Joe, or however you would like to do it, I just-
Would you like to adjust those numbers?
Yeah, we can adjust the numbers.
It's, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, it's up to the, the commission.
Is there any type of exclusion for ADUs within this? That'd be part of that.
I think, I think since the passage of the ADU code, I think this is really important.
Yeah.
It's really important, but glad to see it.
But if, like, like I said, in Old Bisbee, that probably would exclude ADUs, and if you put that garage up for your RV. I don't know, so-
But we can always, like I said-
Yeah, I, I kinda-
Always have more discussion, and like, we still have time to discuss. I just wanted to let you know so we could move on to the next item.
I think it's important, but most of these happen.
I have a question, might, might be along the same lines, my basic understanding, if you wanna build something in Old Bisbee, easiest way to do it is to use the footprint of the previously existing building. Would that override this, or would this override that, or where would they?
I think that's a great question.
Thank you.
You guys will decide whether that-
I'm sorry?
You guys can decide whether this overrides it or not. I think, I think that is-
I think we should make it clear, one way or the other, whatever.
So what, what defines an existing footprint?
So I'm sorry?
An old foundation. Well, yes. So is an old foundation justification for an existing footprint? No, is it a pre-existing, non-conforming use, is that footprint?
That, 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 it is, the, the use of it in, in the prior footprint is, is preserved in our code.
So it's a pre-existing use.
Yeah, the code's already there.
Can we get a copy of that and compare, or see how we can reference one to the other?
Yeah. So bring back the-
Things would be the thing to do, I suppose.
Do you think that this will increase heights of buildings in order to avoid the lot coverage? Do you think that now we're gonna see two, I know we have a thirty, what is it, thirty footer, whatever height, uh, maximum, but-
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. Is this gonna increase two-story buildings? Twenty-six is basically like a story and a half, isn't it?
We can't go higher than twenty-six feet.
Except the twenty-nine, twenty-six you have a right, and twenty-nine you can be granted by the design review.
Yeah, but is that gonna be what we start seeing all the time?
If, if you were exceeding those, those coverage, yeah, they'd have to-
You know, if you're, if you're a developer, I know it's a bad person sometimes, but they're gonna try to create as much lot density, I mean, that's what developers do. They try to jam as much stuff as they possibly can-
Right.
Into a space, so to circumvent that, you bring in the parking restrictions, which counterbalance it. I mean, that's, that's how you, that's how you cover it.
And you can't blame anybody for wanting to monetize their property.
Yeah, and twenty-nine feet is, is not the end of the world.
No.
And then it still has to go before DRB, and then you got view corridors, Chuck, and Doug, and all the other stuff, that now, am I blocking somebody's view? And then that becomes a whole nother issue, but if you're allowed to go twenty-nine feet, you're blocking somebody's view. It's just, it is, we've had a couple of those cases here before, where I remember somebody built a place, and you're like, "Oh, my God, you're ruining my view." Well, you had an opportunity to buy the lot, you didn't buy the lot, so I don't know what to tell you.
Right.
It's, so we got some growing pains, folks, coming before, so I mean-
So is my understanding, we're gonna have something more to look at?
Yes, so I'll, I'll get, um, what Mr. Cobb asked for. And then, I thought I heard you say something else about the historic district, but I wasn't sure. I'm sorry.
No, I was just, just kinda hitting one into the field to see if it was going to affect the historic district.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Like, too many people were talking at once.
Yeah, I understand, sorry.
So lot density would also incorporate shade structures?
Yeah. I mean, that's- Anything that's an actual structure would, you know, begin to do that.
Yeah. I'm just concerned about in Old Bisbee, with people now putting ADUs or trying to do that, being responsible with the water and the runoff. That's, that's a big problem to, to everyone to understand.
It also affects the, affects the flame spread of the lot.
Absolutely.
Right.
And just FYI, trying to get insurance with certain commercial structures right now, I'm going through it right now with my building, even though I'm sprinkling my building, the insurance company's like, "You are a high-risk, you're in some type of flame zone." I don't know what even they call it, but that, we've been designated a high, a high-level area.
Old Bisbee has a history of it.
Yeah. So these are all things that we need to be prepared for when people wanna do their, that they just don't understand.
Well, and I think for the most part, what I've seen is people turning their garages and outbuildings into ADUs. So they can still do that.
Sewer issues and code issues, they all have to be followed. Because, yes, in Tucson, everyone else turning their carport into a one-bedroom apartment. You know, it's like-
Before we run out of camera, are there any, are there any other agenda items that we wanna bring forward in terms of the future, discuss, any discussion or agenda items at the future meetings, other than what we already addressed?
I'm sorry, I have an, uh, item, and I think it's under our jur, would be under our jurisdiction, but there used to be a, um, a zebra crosswalk, um, in front of the Royale, uh, which was very useful, and the Royale is about to reopen, or may be gonna be reopening as a nightclub, where there'd be people crossing the street in the dark, it may be intoxicated, and I'm wondering if, uh, we might suggest to the city council that that be, and then I can also cross the street to get to my home, so see.
Well, I would like to see the crosswalk that they paved over three years ago, was it? That I'd like to see all the crosswalks brought back. There were several on Main Street.
There's only one that hasn't been.
There's one, oh, there, there were several that haven't been yet down, you know, that one.
By satellite and stuff, they seem to be there.
And there was one in front of the, uh, the Bisbee Tour Company that went to that parking lot. I know that's a good one. Yeah, I thought there were several up the hill.
Well, then, maybe we need to address more than one.
Well, I guess I just pass that on, uh-
It's a public works.
Public works, right. That's a good suggestion there.
Since I'm asking for that, and I'm planning on not attending next meeting, could we?
Oh, yeah, we can do it for the April meeting.
That's all right.
Well, again, I don't think that requires action on our part, that's just a logical request, though, that's-
But I can, what I can do is get with Public Works, ask them about those, and then bring something back to the, the commission to let them know.
Any other item?
You kept coming up abandoned vehicles.
Well, I know, this is, I love to hear about them all, but this is back to the RV life, right? We might as well get rid of the junk cars, as well as the junk RVs.
I'm driving a junk car.
Throw that into the mix as well, as part of the matrix, abandoned cars.
Well, utility trailers are in that, if, if we're going back to that, uh, overnight parking, utility trailers.
We can put all that, because some people have little tow behinds that they're gonna-
Remember, there's no discussion on future agenda items.
No. Okay, we are adjourned. I second that.
Hey, Nadine, can anyone explain this?
Oh.